Then we move to the public comment part of this meeting. We have a number of people who signed up ahead of time, who will be allotted five minutes. And I think, you know the usual, we don't discuss personnel matters. And there will be exactly five minutes for each speaker. And the board will not answer questions in the middle of the presentations. Okay, so in order in which the people have signed up, Mr. Robert Cox is first for five minutes.
My name is Robert Cox. I live at 173 Mount Troy Place. That full statement that Mr. Lacher usually reads refers to the idea that the board won't answer questions during the meeting, but will get back to people. So I asked a bunch of questions at the last meeting about school safety issues and about issues of interest to taxpayers of New Rochelle. And then I sent an email after the meeting, reiterating all those questions, asking for a response. And then I sent another email a couple of days ago to the entire board, again, reiterating all the questions. And I don't have an answer. So I just felt like I would get up here and speak to people other than the board about why I'm not getting answers to these questions. And a conversation that Mr. Lacher had with me when he was sworn in as president back in July, which is that he viewed his mandate from the board was to not answer questions from people like me, or Amy Ecker, or anybody else who regularly comes to school board meetings and answers questions, but rather that the board would answer questions from people, I guess, who don't come to meetings and don't ask questions. I know that there's some board members who feel that maybe because I oppose Echo Bay, or because I don't support the mayor, that perhaps I haven't earned the right to get a response to my questions. But as I pointed out in my email, longtime resident of the city, my wife works for the school district, two of my kids graduate from the school district, I've run for the school board twice, I have two kids in the school district, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm American. So I have a right, I think, to get answers to questions that are reasonable, from the board. And yet, Mr. Lacher has chosen to simply ignore my questions. I asked a question about extending the online survey, no answer. Asked a question about the GPS tracking systems, no answer. But the policies regarding school evacuation, about the fire drills, no answer. So I know that Mr. Lacher doesn't care, because he thinks that his mandate, maybe it is, from the board, not to answer questions from people like me, who have the temerity to get up here and ask questions. So I just think that I'll just keep reiterating the questions, I'll keep sending my emails, and if I ever get an answer, I'll report them. But I just think the public should know that this is apparently the policy that Mr. Lacher feels, that he has a mandate to enforce. And so the lack of communication coming from the school district, from the board, in particular, about different things of importance to the community, is a conscious deliberate act on his part. And I think it's a shame, because I've often credited Ms. Petron and Sarah Richmond before her, for their efforts to open up the school board, and be more inclusive, and answer questions, and have more public engagement. And Mr. Lacher, for reasons unknown to me, has decided that his role in life is to thwart all of that, and to not be responsive. And I think the board members who supported Ms. Petron and Ms. Richmond in the past, I guess I'd speak to them, which is, this is really the mandate that you gave Mr. Lacher, that he's not to answer questions from people like me, or Mrs. Ecker, or maybe Ms. Giordano, or other people who come to the board on a regular basis to answer questions. You can do whatever you want, David, but the day is going to come when you're going to need the support of the entire community, not just a little clique of people that you hang out with, to do things like pass a budget that busts the tax cap. And when that day comes, you're not going to have the community's support because of the actions and the way that you behave towards answering questions from people like me. Thanks.
Trying to decide whether a response is warranted. And I will say only that I have one vote on this board. My colleagues put me in this chair, my colleagues can take me out of this chair anytime they want to, I think that would probably make my family really happy. And I will also say that one mandate that certainly, I think, we determined is that we would keep control of our own agendas, and that our agendas would not be hijacked by any member of the community when we're trying to do the business that we think we need to do, in the order that we need to do it. So I think that's all I'm going to say about that. And I'm sure Ms. Petron is delighted that you're so thrilled now with her presidency, when you came up here for two years, and you beat the crap out of her for two years while she was president. But, you know, that revisionist history is also your prerogative. Okay. Our next speaker, Mr. Vincent Malphatano. Five minutes.
Good evening, Board and members of the community. Just a couple of quick things. I think that presentation, sorry, I can't remember your name, really is remarkable, about the research that you come up with to try to help these folks. I know you're supposed to have some sort of citizen advisory committee, like the city did, to give them cover, but those are the kind of people you need on your committee. All right. Well, anyway, to get to some of the issues. This business about the fund balance and all that, Mr. Quinn, very good presentation. Again, worst financial crisis since the Great Depression. I heard that several times over the last several years. Two hundred positions lost over the last five years. And, you know, it's a tight budget situation again. I know how, over these last five years, you could have saved about $6 million. Stop giving your friends free bus rides for their kids up to White Plains and wherever else they want to go. But you won't do that. I know I asked some people who were campaigning for the board some time ago, whether they thought it was an appropriate idea to pay for busing for kids whose parents don't want to send them to our school district. You do, you think it's appropriate. I don't. Okay? We can jump up and down about, well, all this stuff, but it's a ridiculous idea. If you want to save some money, let's have some political guts, all right? Now, some of the people that I spoke with about this privately tell me they don't like it, but they got a gun to their neck. All right? No? Ask around. Okay? There's a very strong political force in the town that's going to make you spend money you don't have to spend, and have us come here and cry about it. But that's for another day. One of the things that concerns me is what I read in Mr. Cox's blog, Talk of the Sound, that deals with Ms. Merchant, board member, and some supposed emails that were exchanged about this supposed superintendent search. Now, I've appeared at all the forums, the first one at Isaac, and I heard a discussion of, "We want public input." And then I heard people say, "Well, we also have, you know, people that we've contacted," and that perked my ear up. And I asked at that meeting to Mr. Lacher, and subsequent meeting over at Albert Leonard, and subsequent meeting at the library, "I want to see the list. Who do you think is important to contact?" You want to tell me? Would you like to tell the members of this community who this board thinks is deserving of a private one-on-one, to get to know what this community is about? I believe I'm entitled to see that list, to know how you think. I asked Mr. Lacher to give me that list. And with all due respect, being an attorney myself, he did a good job, as any attorney would do, in hemming and hawing for 20 minutes and saying nothing. Now, I want an answer to my question. I believe I'm entitled, as a member of this community, to see who my board has identified as being the important stakeholders in this community, worthy of a private conversation with the people who are going to select my next superintendent. Now, I want you to produce that list. And what I read here, if accurate, that supposedly an email was exchanged where Ms. Merchant says, and I quote, "With its proven track record of having single-handedly brought down the mayor, an Echo Bay development project, and killed off the possibility of any meaningful waterfront development from a bona fide developer for the next 10 years, I would not grant a one-on-one meeting." Who are we talking about? This United Citizens for a Better New Rochelle, this group that came together and really put some punch into what jokers like me were doing up at City Hall for the last five years, which gets none of your attention either. You know why? Because you don't have to. This isn't televised, nobody's here, and ain't nobody going to hear what the hell I'm talking about tonight. But those days are coming to an end, people. Ms. Merchant, you should resign. If this quote is accurate, you have no business serving on a public board of trust. And this board owes this community, at at very least, to remove her from a vice presidency chair. If this is accurate, Ms. Merchant, this is the kind of disgusting underbelly of this [BLEEP] that everyone knows exists. The people who are friends of friends, brothers of this one, this one's connected to that one, this one serves on that board, this one's... Well, I'm a tired taxpayer, ladies and gentlemen, I'm just about fed up with this stuff. No? Yeah? Okay. I come out and I talk. But I do believe that one day you folks will be held to account. It's time to pay the piper, people.
Thank you. Ms. Lorraine Carl. Mr. Malphatano, there is a camera up there, the meeting is not live televised, but you will be able to watch yourself...
Don't turn the sound, you can never hear it.
You will be able to watch yourself in all your glory as soon as the tape's ready in a couple of days.
Mr. Lacher, I need your performance. I need your performance, not your snide remarks. You can keep that and stuff it.
Thank you.
Hi.
Ms. Carl, thank you.
I'm Lorraine Carl, 43 Belmont Avenue, in the east end of New Rochelle. I have participated in the ongoing process to include citizens or stakeholders in the search for a new superintendent of schools. That being said, I feel the remarks recently made by Ms. Merchant are both unethical and divisive. This board may not control whether Ms. Merchant is removed by the school's chancellor, or whether she resigns, but you can certainly control whether she continues to serve as an officer of the board. I ask this board to replace Ms. Merchant with a vice president who will pledge to offer openness, transparency, and fairness to all residents, in lieu of partisan and personal business considerations. To do nothing less than remove Ms. Merchant from her executive position will be an endorsement of her remarks, and will negate the efforts this board has put forth during the last year to engage the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Denise Ward.
Denise Ward, 137 Hill and Dale Drive. I'd like to thank David for reminding me how important it is to come to these. Sixty-one percent, sixty-one percent of my taxes go to this district. Sixty-one percent is a lot of money, a lot. The school board is therefore accountable to me, and every other taxpayer in this city, for my money and how it's spent. You're also accountable to every student that walks through the doors of our schools from September until June. You're accountable from kindergarten until high school graduation, and shame on you if there's a child that doesn't graduate. Each and every one of you should interpret such a failure as a personal failure, because it is. Because you chose to be on this school board, you volunteered for this position, you got yourself elected. You chose to do so because you said you were going to make a difference, you said you cared about the students, you cared about the city. Foolishly, this city's population believes some of you, not all of you, some of you. Or at least a minor portion of the population that actually went out and voted, because we all know it's a minor portion. Instead of hearing about what's being done to make the children of this community competitive, productive members of our society, what do I hear? I hear about nonsensical power games by this board. I hear about every effort being made not to be accountable, to not disclose information, about every maneuver possible being utilized not to answer to the public, about school board members covering for each other and covering their flanks, utilizing every means necessary to stifle public access to information, about a school superintendent search that has turned into a sort of game of thrones for certain members of this board. Obviously, this board learned nothing from what happened at City Hall this summer, and this past fall. They learned nothing about taxpayers paying attention to what's going on around them. They learned nothing about what happens when you treat the public with disdain, and they learned nothing about what happens when you speak down to people. This board may very much prefer the complacent sleeping public to which they became accustomed. I believe those days are gone. The citizens of this city are starting to pay attention. And just as importantly, the citizens do not like being stifled, they don't like being censored, and they don't like being told to shut down or to be quiet. They don't like it one bit. Indeed, for many years, certainly the 13 that I've lived here in New Rochelle, I've never attended one of these meetings. And it was my professional acquaintance with Mr. Lacher that incited my interest in what's going on over here, over a year ago. That, and the fact that 61% of my tax dollars go to this school district. And all I hear is that you need more and more money. I mean, I have to say that the hair on the back of my neck went up when Mr. Quinn said, "Oh, and the increase that we get." I'm going to repeat what I said at City Hall. You don't get an increase. You don't get, by law, an increase. You get zero, and then work from there, and ask. You don't get it, because that's the cap. Am I hearing anything about the... I hear from the teachers how hard it is to get anything done. I hear the demands on them are relentless. I was so impressed with what I saw here tonight. I hear about a common core curriculum that is a disaster, and not a peep from this board about what they're doing to help make it better, at the state level, at the federal level, at a local level. Am I hearing anything about the serious report issued by Commissioner Comptolo-Dinopoli? Twenty-two such districts in the financial condition that we're in? Not a word. No. I hear about the vice president of this board decree, practically as if she were a regent, that a group of citizens, the United Citizens for a Better New Rochelle, had not earned the right to a meeting with the consultants hired by this school district, my money, one of the taxpayers. They didn't earn the right? They didn't earn the right? Is she kidding? They hadn't earned the right because they opposed a plan for redevelopment of the city, that a majority of the city's population opposed? That they, as a group, did something this board never once done, they analyzed the numbers on Echo Bay and found them short, found them to be a losing proposition, and they spoke up? But Echo Bay would have worked very well for Mrs. Merchant's husband, who had a vested interest in that project moving forward, and therefore so did she. An interest which is destroyed, an income lost. Too bad. And so she took her revenge, though. A meeting was canceled by Mrs. Merchant with this well-spoken group, with a half a dozen excuses. They're anonymous, they didn't follow procedure in scheduling the meeting, they can just attend the public forum to speak? Nonsense. Nonsense. Who's Mrs. Merchant to decide who's worthy of the consultants, to speak with the consultants? Oh, right, the vice president. Well, do we all know, one of the purposes served by a union representative, the presence of that rep allows the employee to speak up without retribution? It's a well-respected tradition. But here in New Rochelle, the taxpayers don't get a rep. They don't get a group. No, we have to come to a public forum and ask to speak. How dare this board refuse to allow consultants who work for us not to speak to a citizens' group? How dare this board allow the unions to speak to the consultants, but not a group that represents taxpayers? Union representatives speak on behalf of their members, and this board refuses to let UCBNR speak? Mrs. Merchant should step down from this board immediately. Her conflict of interest is clear and convincing. There is no room in this city, this community, for such a bitter...
Five minutes, Ms. Ward.
Narcissistic, vindictive person on a board which supposedly serves our community. At the very least, this board should remove Mrs. Merchant as vice president, by failing to remove her from a leadership position.
Ms. Ward...
This board is in fact...
Ms. Ward, you're out of order.
...and endorsing her behavior.
Counselor, you're familiar with court time limits.
I certainly hope that this is not what's happening. It's time for this board to right some wrongs and stop playing games.
Thank you.
I made up for five years, Mr. Lacher.
It's all right, you can come back next week.
No, I'll finish it tomorrow.
Mr. Dan Glusker. Five minutes.
Is there no way we can... John, get it. Somebody get it.
Good evening. My name is Dan Glusker, 50, Seabright Place, New Rochelle. David and everyone else, I understand that you guys are volunteers. I'm on the board of YBNR, the Little League in New Rochelle. I'm a hockey coach, a baseball coach, a father of two children at Ward. I'm a member of Temporal Israel, and I know that volunteer jobs are thankless. I know that you're unpaid, and you don't have benefits. I don't have any of those things either, as a coach and a father, and so when you sit here and listen to a lot of this, I understand how you feel. There's one difference, though, between you guys and what I'm doing, you know, as a father and a coach, is that the people who join YBNR pay $135, and there's people in the city who pay 5, 10, 15, 20, 30, 40, $50,000 in taxes. So the stakes are higher. And the reason why I'm here tonight is, I'm also a member of United Citizens for a Better New Rochelle, but the real people I represent tonight are myself, my family, and members of the community that are not the same breed that they once were. There's hundreds of people that I know in the community, that I speak with, that I've been informing of, some of the things that have been going on with our finances in the school, in particular, which is the subject of tonight's meeting, that are very upset and angry. And just because this meeting is at late night tonight, and there's not many people here, I can assure you that there are many, many people that can be mobilized and want to be mobilized, when the time is right, to deal with the threat to our city and the school, because to poo-poo it, and I'm not saying that anyone here poo-pooed it, but to poo-poo it as things, as John Quinn said, should improve. There were a lot of "shoulds" in your report, that the economy should improve, we're hoping for X, Y, Z. There's a tax base deterioration. Maybe some of these things are true, but the fact is, is that there were committees formed, CACs, that recommended a whole host of things that, to my knowledge, were not done. And some of them may be tough decisions, but they involve consolidation of department chairs, I understand, you know, hours of schools, inventory and time management, hourly worker changes. There was a whole host of things that people do view the board now as having failed. There is a view right now that the board is not doing its job. And that view is not going to be deterred. And by the way, I'm not saying it's an easy job. But people in this community now, there's a new breed of taxpayer that is going to be stronger. We are going to come out strong, where we believe that our children and our community are under threat. So the reason why I personally am here tonight is because it's not to really want to make your life harder, because, like you said, David, your life would be easier without it. But the fact is, you're here. And the fact is, is that we're not here just to fight. I'm not here just to fight, and it's not a combative thought process, it's a protection of our children and our community. And so when things go down south in the school, so do property values, so do programs. Two hundred positions cut, John, that's not a good thing. I mean, that's not what we want. We want other changes, potentially revenue generating, or some of the other recommendations of the CACs, to be done, because maybe some of those cuts could have been avoided. So I think what we're dealing with here is a situation where there are accountants, there's lawyers, there's doctors, there's professionals of all shapes, sizes, and colors in the community now, who won't ignore this stuff anymore. And even though this meeting is late, like I said, people will come in the future, it's going to get worse if hard decisions are not confronted, because this is a serious problem in hundreds, if not thousands, of people's view that I'm speaking to, even though they're not here tonight. I just wanted to conclude with the fact that the superintendent and everyone else that has school responsibilities, you guys may not all have the skills, and I don't have curriculum skills, I'm not an academic, but there's finance and other skills that you've sought from the community have given input, and, for example, a superintendent, in my mind, would maybe be business-oriented, to try to deal with the hard business questions. So I'm willing to help you, if you're willing to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. The last pre-signed speaker, Ms. Amy Ecker. Five minutes.
No, there's a bunch.
Good evening. My name is Amy Ecker. I live at 47 London Terrace. I do have prepared comments. I think a lot has been, I just want to state, a lot has been said tonight, in different tones of voices. But I think it would be very hard, it would be... It's really hard to say that people aren't right in what they're saying. It's very hard to come here, meeting after meeting after meeting, and not get responses. Dr. Korsdorf, you have responded to, you know, many of my questions, but I still haven't gotten full answers on many things, and I've often been told what a put-off it is, because I do ask questions. Taxpayers and families shouldn't feel like that. And we do give a lot of tax money, and I'm actually not going to talk about the budget, or ask about the CAC again, which hasn't been discussed, their recommendations from last year. But I want to thank Dr. Korsdorf for his follow-up statement, apologizing for the communication glitch last week with the dismissals and arrivals. I appreciated that you have accepted responsibility, but it still leaves me with great concern about the safety of our children. With the occurrence of last week's situations, I have several questions. One, has the district safety committee had a debrief and established a new protocol for future events, such as what happened last week? Dr. Korsdorf, after you and the cabinet make the decision to close school early, what happens next? At first, I was going to ask if it's a part of the district-wide safety plan, but I reviewed the district-wide safety plan, and there is no protocol for early dismissal and late arrival. These are the basic building blocks of a safety plan. I'm confused as to why that isn't included in the district or school safety plans. This is also something for over the past 10 years. You're supposed to hold an early dismissal drill. This is the first year, this past October, that we held one that actually we did something. So we should have practiced these before. Reading from a neighboring district, they're very short, two paragraphs, "The superintendent on early dismissal or designee in consultation with the building principal, as appropriate, shall make the decision to close school and offices early and dismiss students. He or she will notify the transportation supervisor, who will dispatch district buses to the appropriate locations. The superintendent or his or her designee shall activate the emergency notification system that will provide relevant information to all affected students and staff. No child in grades K through 5 shall be dismissed early from school if designated individuals cannot be contacted. A cadre of staff will remain in the building after dismissal until all children have been picked up. The senior high school shall be dismissed first, followed by the middle school, and finally the elementary schools. The middle and high schools will dismiss all its students, and buses will depart at the time designated by the superintendent. Parents will be notified of these procedures at the beginning of the year, so they can make arrangements for where children will go in case of early dismissal. Such arrangements shall be given in writing to the school." It's two paragraphs, and it's very clear, and so I know there is big debate, and this whole new policy came about, but this should have been thought of with those new policies. We can't keep going backwards. So, sorry, I lost my... Mr. Gallen has done a tremendous job communicating at Davis. I believe he has created lists on Connect Ed based on grades, language, and a whole school list. I'm unable to speak for other schools, but he may be a valuable resource for making sure Connect Ed is being used to its utmost potential. Sorry that I'm putting him on the spot, he's not here. Safety, communication, accountability, transparency. It's a broken record. The law requires early dismissal drills annually, yet last fall was the first time we actually practiced one. We've had well over 10 years to practice early dismissal, and yet I waited for my child over an hour before knowing he was still at school, and the next day I was unaware of the busing situation until I was on Facebook. I don't look at these breakdowns to be the fault of the school leaders, but of the district leaders. There's been a lot of song and dance about all of our work on safety, and yet we failed at the most basic level. And no, it doesn't matter to me that we are a large district. As leadership, that is something you have known with taking on this job. Don't undertake something and then use it as an excuse. Many children and staff were put at risk last week, and communication was poor. You have my email, and I look forward to your responses, which I will be sharing with my email list.
Thank you. We have at least one other person who has asked to speak, Mr. Daniel Basis. Three minutes you have. Three minutes you have.
Good evening on this chilly evening. My name is Daniel Basis, 31 Chatham Road. I'm coming here tonight to raise what I think has already been raised many times, but to let you know that there is a group of citizens in this city that are taking very seriously the process for choosing a new superintendent, for looking at safety, looking at the rather rude awakening that our city school district has received from the State Controller's Office, from Moody's Investor Service. You know, as you may have heard me say before, I am a New Rochelle born and bred boy, and I take great pride in the city. I moved back to this city. And I think that the board should understand that you're under a microscope now, but you don't have to be alone, that you have a citizenry that is growing more vocal, that is growing more robust in its attention to school details, attention to how our children are going to be educated and how they are going to be financed, and how that everything that what we want and what we pay for with our tax dollars will be delivered. We are a large city. You could say that the superintendent coming in is going to be in charge of a city school district that rivals on many levels a small college or even a university. It's a big district, 12, 13, 14,000 kids at last count, I'm not sure. But I want to tell you that as somebody who is nonpartisan, apolitical, there is no room in this city for machine politics. There is no room in this city for divisiveness over what group you may or may not be in. If we focus on our children and focus on getting to the answers rather than trying to score political points, we will succeed, as generations before us have done. And so it's a new year. We're in the start of a process, a very important process. And I would just like to say that as a member of a group called United Citizens for a Better New Rochelle, I don't belong to a political party. I've never advocated for one party or another. So you know that when you're talking to me, I'm talking about the raw facts and the raw issue. And I don't care where you stand. I care where you stand for our children. Because with the taxes that are going up and with the financial strains that have been on this country and this community, I really don't want to hear about excuses. We have enough money. We have to find it and use it effectively. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has not signed up who would like to address the board this evening? There still is an opportunity to do that for three minutes. Okay. In that case, I need, I actually do have a response on the United Citizens' request. What I haven't heard tonight is, I won't speak for Ms. Merchant. She's an individual board member. She's accountable for her own, whatever she says, in the same way that all the rest of us are accountable for what we said. But I will explain the process of how this was done. First of all, the search consultants will be coming to the district on February 13th. They will be making a full report on their outreach and everything that they did in order to, and remember what the purpose of all this outreach is. The purpose of all this outreach is to develop a composite profile, a composite profile for somebody that we hope to find. We take all of the views that have been developed by all of the people and all the people who have spoken, the people who have done the survey. And from that, the search consultants, part of what they are expected to do is to develop a sort of profile for the perfect candidate, which of course is almost impossible to find because to encompass every single thing that everybody said, probably even Jesus wouldn't suffice. So we do the best we can with a composite profile. But the process, the process was that the board had a meeting with the search consultants and the board, this mythical list that has taken on a whole life of its own. The board had a meeting, and the board, with consensus of all of the board, advised and consulted with our consultants on the outreach, how many to do, where to do them, what part of town, mix them up, some in-school buildings, some out-of-school buildings, and various stakeholder groups in the committee, in the community. That was done in a board meeting with all board members who were present. I think we had, I'm not sure if we had nine, but I think we had eight. All board members participating and all board members sitting and thinking of everyone who they could possibly think of, who, I mean, groups that we know about, neighborhood associations, people who get letters when we do budget reviews, certainly all kinds of different constituent groups. That was done by the full board in a full meeting with our search consultants. I will tell you that for whatever reason, and I don't know the reason, but for whatever reason, the United Citizens' group was not mentioned. It was not rejected. It was not mentioned. It never came up. And one would think that there was certainly somebody in the room who might have mentioned it, but there was, that would be you. It was not mentioned at that meeting at all. I think, I don't think there's any dispute about that. Okay? And that was all done by board discussion and board consensus with the search consultants. After that meeting, as they then began their outreach, one of the plans was the individual board members have one-on-one meetings with the search consultants. I'm sure there probably are a few of you who think, why do individual board members rate a one-on-one? Well, that's because we are charged with the ultimate responsibility, and we will ultimately pick a new superintendent for this district. In the course of the one-on-one meetings, one of our colleagues decided that that group should have a meeting and requested that meeting with the search consultant during the course of that private conversation. That information was not shared with the board, not before, not after, not any time. That information was not shared after that meeting was requested by an individual board member, not through the process, which was that all of the board discuss this together. That meeting was requested. It was also requested to be held at someone's home, which was totally inappropriate, as opposed to all of the other meetings that were held in more public places. But it was all outside the process of the way the board developed the outreach program. Originally, the search consultant agreed to the meeting. And then the search consultant, who in fact didn't consult with any of the board members, thought about it on his own initiative, not because of any guidance from any of us, thought about it and said, you know, this process was highly unusual, exceptional, not the way all the rest of the meetings were established, through discussion with the full board, in the presence of the full board, and in a more regularized setting. And so the search consultant decided on his own initiative, the two search, the lead search consultants for this search, decided on their own initiative that they would not have the meeting that had been committed to the one board member with the United Citizens' group. That was the beginning. After that, then the board member challenged the fact that the meeting was canceled after the meeting had been originally scheduled. And so it was then put to the full board in the same way that all of the things were put to the full board in that meeting. It was put to the full board, whether the full board at that point to grant some private meeting. And at that point, the full board did its straw poll, and the full board decided by seven votes, I believe, out of the nine, seven votes decided not to grant that meeting. Seven votes. So Ms. Merchant, who again can speak for herself, had one vote. And we would have allowed the meeting with five votes, but there were seven people on the board and seven people who decided that the meeting should not be held. The other thing about the group, and I don't know, those of you who are affiliated with the group, one of the things, we have a longstanding policy on this board, a very longstanding policy, that correspondence that is anonymous, that's not signed by a real person with a real name, is just not considered. Because we can't do business with correspondence that comes, that's not signed, that's not identified. And in the case of, in the case of this group, and I'm not going to get into the legalities, I don't know if the group is organized, because that's not what it's about. It doesn't matter. But the point is...
Are you kidding me? Go ahead, finish. I'll talk when you're done.
You'll talk when I'm done, after I talk about how private board communications, which doesn't seem to upset anybody here. The group, the group, there is nothing that we have seen to this minute, there is nothing from the United Citizens' group. Neighborhood associations have presidents, organizations have presidents, BTA Council has a president. I don't care if it's an elected president, there's a name. There has not been one item of correspondence from the United Citizens' group that ever had an identifiable person's name. When one of the board members asked, we were told, go look it up on the website, you'll see, you know, a few of the people who formed the group. But it's just the way the correspondence came to the board. And so nine, seven members of the board decided, because of the unorthodox procedures and the fact that there would be another forum, that there would be, and this is the part that keeps getting overlooked, that every opportunity has been given, will still be given, there is a forum tomorrow night, as we have announced and repeated, and I think there was another robo-call today, that every opportunity is given for anyone to come and speak, including the entire organization of United Citizens. If we need to sit here tomorrow night for four hours because 50 or 100 of you want to come, as long as you deal with the questions and, you know, and deal with the issues, you're going to not talk to the board anyway, you're going to talk to the search consultants. There are the three questions that we announced at the outset. What are the strengths of New Rochelle? What are the shortcomings? And what are the things that you would like to see in a superintendent? And we invited that, we continue to invite it, we continue to welcome it, and there's no reason that that conversation has to be held in somebody's home, and that that certainly can be done at a forum, just like the other forums were held. That's on that point. And the final point that I'm going to make about the process, and we're not having the dialogue, I'm just explaining and responding, and then we actually have to go into a brief executive session to discuss employment history of particular persons. But the, and the last part of it, that is actually the most disturbing that we haven't talked about yet. Some of you, at least one of you, cited as the source, the talk of the sound. Well, the talk of the sound got the information about private communications by, in the Board of Education, from one of its members. That's a very serious problem. That's a very serious problem when there are private communications that are disclosed by members, that are published, that then become the source. Okay? That may not mean anything to some of you here. While there are, there are matters that boards need to discuss in private, and that's, and it is not within the purview of any individual board members to decide what should be, what shouldn't be, when a board tries to act with private communication that is declared to be private communication. Well, counselor, counselor, you, you know, you have attorney-client privilege. We're not having a dialogue. Correct. Thank you. So the end of this is that we have another issue, a bigger issue, that the board has to deal with in terms of its ability to function. If the board can't trust its own members for communication, we are going through negotiations now. Perhaps some of you think that every step of the negotiations ought to be public before the deal is done. We have all kinds of other things. We talk about personnel matters, we talk about other things. The point is, the board has to be able to operate with trust in each other, with the ability to communicate with each other, and the fact that communications are shared, then get quoted, then get published, totally aside from whatever Ms. Merchant had to say. There were things that I wrote that were quoted, and the board has to be able to operate in an environment of trust and to, and to be able to do its work. So that's the situation. There will be, I'm finished. There will be, there will be a meeting.
He's still going. He's still going.
Here Corinne, you're doing a bit of a crisis, but now that the cat's out of the bag, what do you think about that?
I'm not going to comment on her comment.
Mr. Malphatano...
No, no, actually it isn't. Actually, it isn't. Okay.
Mr. Malphatano, listen. You are, you are taking, you know, you're taking information totally out of context. You did say, is this accurate? And let me, let me finish. I'm not going to deal with the chatter in that blog because, because it's not accurate. Okay? All of that stuff that's in there is not accurate. Okay? And let me say for the, let me say for the record, let me say for the record, Mr. Malphatano, you know, I, I remember you from the library. You need to back off now. I'm trying to speak. Mr. Malphatano. Mr. Malphatano.
You might get the list.
If you would, if you would let her speak, Mr. Malphatano, other people can have a conversation. Please. Good. Good. You're way off base. You're taking a source that, whole article, whatever, is totally inaccurate. And what I want to tell you is, we have been more than open and willing to have any comments, any discussion that, that anyone wants to have, and have gone out of our way to have that for the search for the superintendent. Okay? The issue was, okay, great. The issue was, should this group have a meeting in a private home and we're having these public forums? And the point is to discuss and have a dialogue and have information and have all the input that everybody wants to have in the choice of the superintendent and selection. And that's the real point. That's the real bottom line. And if there's a forum and everyone wants to come, the 77 people or however many of the number is, that's great. We're all for that. Having this thing in someone's private living room, that was another matter. But we're all for having communication, we're all for getting anybody's, everybody's input. And, and you want to come to the forum tomorrow, it's from 7:00 and 9:00, we'll all be there. We're willing and able to have a full dialogue and discussion. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get your input. I'm going to state that. Okay?
Okay.
So thanks.
Can I just make one, David, can I just make one statement? Because you know what? There's so much anger in this room, and it's really offensive that, that some people in this room are making a blanket statement across the board. The decision not to have a meeting is not against this organization or any organization. I can state for a fact that it didn't matter whether the organization was this organization, that organization, pro-school, post-school, pro-city, non-pro-city. My basis, or basis from anybody, has to do with, is it a community organization? Are there enough meetings? How many meetings are set? So you need to remove the anger from this room and make a determination of, what were the standards that this Board of Education set for our consultants? Do we have enough forums? And do we have the voice? Because ultimately, it's about making sure that every community member has their voice heard. Do we have an ample voice and platform so that we can have the criteria? That's what this stage is, is setting the criteria for what are the standards are we putting out there to find the candidates to come in? This is the beginning of the process. We are not jumping from this forum and hiring the next superintendent tomorrow. This is the start of the process. And I think everyone is taking something that was released, that A, should not be released, but I'm not even going to go there. released, but I'm not even going to go there. But really, what should happen is that this is the start of a process, seeking out and opening up to, which if we jump to the beginning, is that we're doing something, the board has jumped to something that has not been done, opening up to layers and trying to get as much input, throwing open the net to get as much input as possible in the beginning of the process. Okay? Mr. Malphatano, you know what? I've listened for many years that I've been on this board and heard you and been bantered by you, and you know, quite honestly, I have the mic now. I'd appreciate you closing your mouth, and I will listen to you. You know what? When you're elected to this board and your butt is in the seat, by all means, I will listen to you as much as I want. If you need to, you can leave. Okay?
Vince, Vince, stop.
I've had the utmost respect and sit there. You know what? Your language, you do whatever. If you want to be immature, I'm glad. So to the other people who really care to hear about the process, I will address you and not Mr. Malphatano. Okay? But if you understand what the process is, we really want to, and I know I'm speaking genuinely about, the process has nothing to do with who you are, what you are. You can, it could be my mother asking. And quite honestly, if this is the process that you cannot be heard, and this was a meeting, this is what it was. It has nothing to do with you, United Citizens for a Better New Rochelle. The platform is, here are the forums. Okay? So please do not feel slighted because of that. I don't know what other agendas that you feel are going on, but if, this is the start of the process. But you're going to be, those of you will be angry regardless of whatever. I'm sorry about that, but take it however you want. I just felt that it was necessary to state that that's not the case, but it will be said.
Okay, so, so David had his side of the facts. First of all, yes, I did offer it to have it in my home. The reason why I offered to have it in my home, because when the appointment was made, it was made for 9 o'clock after the high school session. So having it at the high school didn't make sense because that would mean more overtime for custodians. I offered to have it at my house. I'm more than happy, we were more than happy to have it any place we wanted to, but since the time that was set was 9 o'clock after the high school forum, that's why I offered it. So again, I had no problem having it anyplace else. It was just a matter of convenience. Just like when I had my one-on-one with this search consultant, we had it at the Mirage Diner at 8 o'clock. I didn't mention that to my colleagues, but apparently not mentioning the home piece was a big issue. But I had it there. Why did I have it there? Because they were going to open up City Hall early just so I can meet with the search superintendent. I said, there's so many places in New Rochelle that are open, why spend taxpayer dollars to open up a spot so I can have a one-on-one conversation? That made absolutely no sense. So I thought the same thing with this situation. If we had it in the middle of the day, we could have it in City Hall. That was not a problem. Now, with Ms. Patrone, I agree with her. She, she's always been very sensible. She's not one of the people on this board that takes things politically, and, and you can tell from the comments that you heard from Ms. Merchant, that her and other folks on this board look at things in a political nature and not necessarily, and what's best interest of the children. So it was an easy request to have. I'm sorry, I did not mention that.
You need to stop putting words in my mouth.
Can I finish?
No.
Can I finish? Because you always like to cut me off, Ms. Merchant. So can I finish now? Thank you. So, so the point is that we, as you can tell, it's very political, and, and the choices that are made are based on who is a part of the circle, who's not part of the circle. And I think everybody's voice needs to be heard, and it's just as easy to have offered this group a conversation, just like it did for everyone else. Sorry, did not come out during that executive session, and as I stated in my email to everybody here on the board, that it was in my one-on-one conversation with the consultant, that's something that he said that jarred my memory of the group and having them talk, because there's something unique that he said that I thought this group could provide to the, and what I've seen from the forums, I still believe there's something unique that this group can provide for that input.
Okay, thank you. Could we have a motion to go into executive session to discuss employment history of particular persons? I'm hoping this will be five minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll adjourn the meeting after that. Thank you. Thank you all for coming, participating.